Good evening. I'll now call the meeting to order. If I could get Commissioner Edwards to do the invocation for us and Commissioner Long would do the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If everyone would bow their heads, please. You're heavenly Father. We thank you for another opportunity to get together and do the business of Newton County. We ask that you would bless us, watch over us, care us all safely home tonight. In any way I say these things, it's Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual will be liberty and health of all.
Good evening, Madam Chair. The next item we have on the agenda is item number three for the fiscal year 2026, the proposed budget presentation by our finance director, Ms. Brittany White.
Good evening. Tonight we will be presenting an updated proposed budget to you. We have went in and revised some numbers at multiple discussions that we've had with commissioners over the past week. So these numbers will be, they will differ from what we presented a week ago. So we'll start out with our all-fund summary. Just as a reminder, we do adopt a budget for all of the funds, the general fund, special revenue funds, capital funds, and enterprise funds. So our total countywide budget is looking at $145,799,561, which is an increase of 8.8% over last year. Now we'll dive into the general fund, which is the county's major fund. So for our general fund expenditure highlights, we will start out with new additions to the budget this year. So we have $3.7 million in the comping class increase. We have $1.5 million for health insurance increase. We have $1,750,000 for additional positions needed. A lot of these positions are needed due to added projects from the SPOLOST. We have $1 million in the budget for public works bridge repairs, $750,000 for public works culvert replacements, $245,000 for a virtual server upgraded, ABM energy upgrade debt service that we pay to Huntington Bank, that payment is $1.1 million. And then, just a side note, we did remove Keep Newton Beautiful from the general fund. That did move to the solid waste fund this So for our general fund revenue highlights, this budget is going to be at an estimated, keep in mind this is an estimated millage rate at this point. We have not got the final tax digest. So that is an estimated millage rate of 8.6, which would be an increase of $94 on a $300,000 house. We've also budgeted an increase of $400,000 in our loss collections. There is a utilization of $4 million in fund balance, as well as an increase to insurance premium taxes of $400,000. And this is just a quick overview of the general fund by category. So our biggest category in the general fund is always going to be personnel, which is at 71.9 million. So that does make up 66% of the budget, followed by our purchasing and contracted services at 16.8%, supplies at 10.9%, other costs at 3.4%, other financing uses at 2.2% and debt service at 1.1%. So that brings the total general fund budget to 108,715,727. And this is just the general fund by department. This number's been sent out. That can also be seen on the digital budget book, so I will not review every one of these numbers. And this is just a quick graph, updated from the last time, to show what the millage rate would look like at 8.6% over the past 10 years. And then, this is just the millage rate comparison for surrounding counties. And that wraps up this presentation. Our next steps are going to be, budget adoption is scheduled to be at the next board meeting, regular board meeting at 7:00 next week on the 17th.
Now it's time for public comments. If anyone has a comment, if you'd like to come forward, please do so at this time. You'll have three minutes, and that will be on the clock. And if you'll state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Kim Shear. I live at Quail Valley Road. Thanks for letting me speak today. I stand before you with a deep sense of urgency to discuss what will be an unpopular opinion for this commission, and that's what, we must maintain our current budget without any increases, or very minimal increases with a non-tax impact for the upcoming fiscal year. Increasing the county budget often leads to higher taxes or fees, placing additional burdens on residents. Many families are already struggling with economic challenges, and higher taxes can exacerbate their difficulties, reducing disposable income and overall quality of life. A larger budget can sometimes lead to inefficient resource management. When more funds are available, there may be less incentive to scrutinize expenditures and eliminate waste. It's crucial to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely and delivers maximum value to the community. We have seen certain departments request for large increases every year, and they have gotten them. Given the economic climate we are all in, we should strive for efficiency over the status quo. Maintaining a stable budget is essential for economic stability. Predictability in government spending fosters confidences among businesses and residents, encouraging investment and growth. Budget increases can create uncertainty, potentially deterring investment and slowing economic progress. There are calls from citizens for better restaurant shopping and entertainment. These types of national and regional businesses look to how our leaders manage the yearly budgets, in addition to other factors. We have to show economic responsibility and stability so that businesses want to invest here. The primary responsibility of the county's government is to provide essential services such as roads, water, infrastructure, and public safety. Should budget expansion include non-essential programs that divert funds from these critical areas, this compromises the quality of essential services that all citizens rely upon. Non-essential services should be funded through the private sector or available grants. A commitment to maintaining the current budget reinforces accountability and transparency in government spending. It encourages officials to justify every allocation. Engage with the community. Ensure that expenditures are made in the most cost-effective manner. This builds trust and confidence among residences. What I would like to see this board come back and do is a biannual review of our budget, and ask each department leader to provide a full accounting of spending to date. That way the citizens can stay informed, see that departments are staying within budget, and if not, ask the heads to determine how they will address this additional funding. I would also like to see a citizen task force for budget put forth, so that citizens have more than three minutes to comment, and actually can get into the details of what is being spent. The tax burden has gotten to the point where daily living is a struggle. We understand the need to fund the essentials. This has to be a kitchen table moment for government. You need to improve efficiency, maintain existing budgets, and show a commitment to responsible governance.
Does there anyone else?
Of course, it has to do with property tax. My name is Jennifer Dowd. We live in Oxford off of Cook Road. So we've gotten our assessment on market value. My questionnaire has to do with, if you do some research, the property increase over last year, as far as just in general, is like 3.3%. But when I do the math and figure ours, what we've been given so far, it's up 5.6%. So if we're staying in line with what the market value is, there's a large increase there in the percentage. Also, I appreciate you showing the different millage rates for the counties, but unless their market value, we're comparing apples to apples, then that's a little bit irrelevant there. So, that point. And also, the SPOLOST positions, why weren't they covered by SPOLOST? Why is there a huge increase in filling these positions that will be ongoing? Why weren't they covered by the SPOLOST initiative? So that pretty much covers it. I mean, because my husband and I are just reaching that retirement age, I just retired this year, and these increases are just going to be a burden on us in moving forward in a retirement life, when we've been in this county for 50 years or more. So it's really disturbing to see these increases come about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Norton of Newbin. I'm one of the people that live off of Social Security. I do have a pension. My Social Security went up, first of the year, went up $50 a month. It's not a lot. But then they turned around and increased the cost of my Medicare. So there went part of that money. The thing you had up here a minute ago showed a $94 increase on my taxes, if I have a $300,000 home. It's getting close to that, not if you look at it, but according to the tax assessor's office. So if you increase the budget and you increase the taxes, that's more money out of the seniors' pocket. And the more money out of the seniors' pocket, the less money we have to spend at the local restaurant, the grocery store, and every place else here in Newton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Morgan, 2158 East Street, Covington, Georgia. I've had it pointed out to me this week that you cannot cover SPOLOST, new SPOLOST personnel with SPOLOST funds, because by law, SPOLOST can only be used for capital projects. The other thing is, the budget has got to cover the increase in county medical and healthcare expenses. We are all experiencing that. We can't expect the county to eat that. And as far as increasing personnel costs, if it takes that, a limited amount of increase to keep our good people in place, we have good employees, and they are not paid in keeping with their duties and their responsibilities. And so I'm all for in keeping our good people in place.
Thank you.
Hello, Elena Sanders. I'm going to speak to the millage rate, which will eventually go into the budget. And the young lady that just came up recently who spoke on why are we comparing those counties, that was my question as well. Because if you look at Jasper, Walton, Morgan, and Butts, their population, as we see Jasper County population is 17,000, Morgan is 22,000, Butts is 27,000. Those counties barely grew by 2,000 people in five years. So why are we even utilizing those counties? The only county that actually grew by 17,000 was Walton County, because they've gotten a lot of our residents. And also, let's look at the millage rate. Walton County's millage rate hasn't changed in five years. So why are we comparing Walton County's millage rate to Newton County that was going up and down like a roller coaster? They also have a homestead exemption, a floating homestead, to where their property assessment is frozen. So why are we comparing them to Newton County to let the taxpayers say, hey, these other counties' millage rate has increased? Maybe we should do that. They have not. Walton County has sustained. Morgan County went from 2020, from 10.7 to 9.6 in 2024. Butts County went from 13.2 to 10.4 in 2024. And then you also have Jasper went from 11.5, stayed the same for three years, stayed the same from 2023 to 2024, and did not change. Now, there's two reasons why these counties have high millage rates. Two things. Number one, they don't have the population to sustain the county. So their millage rate has to be high. They have no economic development, and those counties are getting older, not younger. So the population, I don't want to say dying off, but the population is diminishing. So the only thing they have is property taxes to be able to sustain them. Newton County has grown within five years, 13,000 people. So we have the economic development. We have the growth. Now, look at Walton County. One of the things Walton County and these other counties have, they utilize federal grants to sustain themselves and to offset the taxes. Newton County does not even have a grant rider that applies for these grants. How much federal dollars are we utilizing that is there for us to be sustained ourselves and not put it on the taxpayers, to where you're only looking at property taxes to look at everything? So as we also look at the budget, the auditor came before us and said that the solid waste can run on its own, because they're making a profit. Yes, they have a debt, but what Newton County has not done, when they're increasing that convenience fee, Newton County should be decreasing the amount of money that we're giving to them, so they're able to sustain themselves. Also, these other places, as Walton County has utilities, so they have money that's coming to the budget. We need to look at our budget and look at how we can supply things to offset the taxpayers. Let's do our research, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, staff members. I'm Larry McSwain, 35, Glengarry Chase, Covington, Georgia. I'm a 30-year resident of Newton County. I own a home here and also some agricultural property. The first thing I'd like to say is, I want to thank you folks for opting in to HB 581. After a property tax assessment increase at my home and in my whole neighborhood of 20%, and so I'd like to have the other ladies 5%. I'm particularly appreciative of the provisions of HB 581. Over the last few years, you've done a great job here of holding our millage rates down, as Ms. White's chart showed. To some degree, of course, that's been possible because of significant increases in our tax digest each year. But nevertheless, I certainly appreciate the trend toward lower millage rates, and ask that you continue that trend in FY 2026. The first budget I saw, and probably most of the public saw, was the 13% increase, which I thought, as probably most of you did, that that was terribly out of line. The new budget of 9.3% increase is certainly more reasonable, but I'm pretty sure that most people in this audience don't expect a 9.3% income increase, or salary increase, this year. So I'm asking that you all continue to work toward a more conservative budget with the goal of holding millage rate at or very near at last year's rates, which I believe was about 8.2. There's certainly some departments that still need some reductions, and I suggest you, of course, look at those that have at least a 10% or better increase requested. And there are several of those, data processing, tax commissioner, tax assessor, risk management, probate court. And I saw a very large increase in public works, which, of course, is a very desirable thing to do, but it just simply may not be practical to have a 33% increase in the budget in a single year. Last thing I want to say, the ABM contract gets under my skin, just as it did five or six or seven years ago. It's probably one of the most wasteful things the county's ever done, and I just ask that you continue, or at least take a really hard look at that contract, because it simply seems to be costing us money with no savings. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Douglas Johnson, and I've been a resident of Newton County since 1973. My first comment is, your speaker system in here is poor. I can't understand what y'all are saying, and neither when the representative gets up there to talk. I guess your speakers are up in the ceiling someplace. They ought to be, the world we can hear. I can't understand a thing that y'all say. But I'd like to reiterate what some of the other people have said. My Social Security is not keeping up with your tax increase. Some places, particularly Georgia, puts a moratorium on the tax increase until the property is sold. I think you ought to consider that. And then, like I say, the other thing is, about two years ago, we voted to give a break to seniors over 65, a break on the school taxes. Nothing been done about that. I'm 90 years old, and I think I've paid my taxes, especially my school taxes, long enough. I think it's sometime for somebody else to start taking. I don't know what y'all have done, but evidently you're lagging your feet on whatever you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Hi. Never done this before. I'm Connie Osborne. I live on South River Drive, and been living in Newton County for more than 40 years. And my question here would be, my concern, one of my concerns is, these positions that are added, I understand SPOLOST cannot pay for that, but once the SPOLOST projects are done, do these positions ever go away? Or is it, they're just there for the next position? So we add things, and we never seem to take them away. It's just all done by attrition. So once these positions are added, it just makes me wonder, when will it end?
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Okay. If not, then we'll close the comments.
Madam Chair, did you want to inquire for the commissioners at this time?
Yes.
If so, we'll start with District 1, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Brittany, this is kind of a rhetorical question. So our fund balance, we met for an hour and a half this morning. So our fund balance is at the recommended, we've spent that down to the recommended six months. Is that correct?
With utilizing the $4 million in this coming budget, we will be right at six months.
Okay. That's my comfortable spot. Well, you know that. And speaking of the SPOLOST projects, everybody knows that those SPOLOST projects created some personnel needs. And whether we like those projects or not, they were voted on by the citizenry. So a majority passed that SPOLOST. Some of the personnel numbers, I know we all like to have our roads repaved, and this time of year, we like to have our roadsides manicured or bush hogged, whatever mode, whatever you want to call it. So especially when it comes to paving, the money we have, we feel is necessary for some paving projects in Newton County. If we have to contract those out, because we do not have the proper personnel, then we'll get about 50 cents on the dollar out of those projects. In other words, if we've got 20 miles worth of money set aside for paving, then if we have to go outside and contract that, you're going to get about 10 miles out of it, and each district suffers for that. So I just want to provide a little explanation for that. Let's see, the 3.7 for the comping class adjustments, I feel is necessary, because everybody knows that hiring new personnel to take care of turnovers is about as twice expensive as paying and retaining those personnel. And there's not a bigger fiscal conservative up here. So I think that's all I had right now. Just know, we're still, this may not be a final budget. I don't know. We're still hammering away. I know we, Ms. District 5 Commissioner and I spent with the county manager and finance director this morning for an hour and a half at least, poring over some of this stuff and trying to chisel away what we could. So just know, it may not be a final budget, but know that we are working on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to reiterate that as well, that, of course, we know that this may not be a final budget. We're definitely going line by line and doing our best to really delve deep into We're definitely going line by line and doing our best to really delve deep into every single department, uh, really looking at what they actually spent in the previous year prior versus just applying a specific number that we may think that they may need or not, but really looking at those actual numbers down to the penny and really being able to see where we can make sure that we're being good stewards of every single department, every single dollar that's being spent, and making sure that we're maximizing on the monies that we are allotting to every single department. We have a lot of departments that we've got, that we have to fund, so we want to make sure that we are funding each one of those departments to make sure that they are functioning, they are running properly. And so it was great to see, initially, you all saw and you may have heard, we proposed maybe it would have been at a 10 mills, then went down to nine, and now you can see at 8.6. So this board is doing everything that they can to try to find ways to ensure that we are being good stewards of the monies that we're getting from the property taxes and fees. I have asked as well, and I've had a conversation with our county manager, we do have to look at other resources of funding. And so I know the, we've been talking about having a, a grant rider. We've been talking about grant services. We've had both of those online previously. We didn't have anyone when we put those positions out online to actually submit. And so I think what we have to do is really go back and revamp that grant rider position to make sure that it is a position that is, um, one, where we will have someone that would really want it and would really want to take on that position. Just so looking at other resources as well to kind of balance out or add to what we already have. So I wanted to ensure our residents that we're doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible with our budget, and we're going to keep doing everything we can to go through line by line, every single thing, so that we can make sure that it is something that even our residents, you are satisfied with as well. So thank you for the comments tonight, even if it's not in a public board meeting. We look forward, I know, to receiving comments, whether they're to our emails, to whatever it is, that feedback, we want to get that feedback as well to help us continue to dig deeper as well to make sure that we have a great budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, like the other two Commissioners stated, we want to reiterate that we are looking at the budget and looking at line, line, and make sure that the budget is, still be able to function. And also the other, looking for extra resources to help us out with the budget. And I just want to thank the comment, for the comments as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you, you know, we, I, I've been a part of a few budgets, and I haven't met a budget that I liked. But I, but what I do know is that during budget time, it's about providing services, you know, like share, fire, roads, our employers. I do know that our employers do not pay their worth because of the heap of them, they are working here. And I know at one point, they were working for the county because they lived here and they loved here. And so, you know, whenever an opportunity may come that we can somewhat increase their pay, then I think we should look at that very closely. Also, the quality of the community, you know, you can't just start things in the community and then just stop them. Say, well, you know, I just think we get, need to cut here, we need to cut there, especially when it comes to our childrens and our seniors. We have got to provide services for our childrens and our seniors. And let's be mindful where most, where I believe a bigger part of cut from, cuts come from, in my opinion, since I've been here and I sit up and I listen, same as everyone else, it basically comes from the major cuts from District 4 and 3. Let's stop cuts, these services. Now sometimes, you know, I'm going to say this in closing, Madam Chair, Mr. R.C. Corry was friend of mine, and he lived on Carroll Street, good man, good Lord rest his soul. And he told us, he said, Henderson, says sometime in your life, you have to kind of swallow a bit of pill in order to get what you need. And so we're going to work, at least I know I am going to work as hard as I can to make sure that the taxes are as low as they can be, but by the same time, I want us as a community, as a county, to enjoy the services that we have enjoyed for years. And once again, I'm going to close with, with this. We was, I was at the horse show and one of the days during co, public comment time, she said, well, she said, if the fire department or the emergency service could have came to my house just five minutes early, it could have saved my dad's life. And so I don't ever want to hear that again from anybody else in, in the audience saying that if we could have did something a little bit better if we had not laid our foot because of things happening, that it could have saved someone's life. So, so we, at least I know I do, am mindful of what about sometime with our needs or in our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Don't cringe, Brittany. So we've, we've been working a lot together, and I think they cringe when they see me coming in the county office now. But I have to say, it's been a great experience working with everybody here on this budget. Um, I think everybody has the same mindset that we wanted to do everything we could. I mean, we get all the messages and all the comments, and we appreciate that, and we need to hear that, but we also know that we have to do this. We have to know that everybody's on their budget, everybody's with their family, what the economy's doing right now. We're all feeling the same thing, and we're getting stretched every direction. I don't know how many people have gotten a home insur, homeowner's insurance bill lately. That'll put you over the edge right there when you get that. So every little dime, and when we, when we say something about the millage, it always bothers me too when someone says something about the millage rate, and they say, well, it's only $93 on a $300,000 house. Well, it's not only $93. That's $93 that you might not be able to go to the grocery store nowadays. So I really, really have tried to work with the county, and they've been great about it, about us getting this number down. I would love to see us not change the millage rate. Um, you know, I may have to compromise. Uh, you know, one of the things I definitely want to bring up is we get hit a lot of times about the school board. And I know my friend from the school board's out here, and he's had to listen to my direct candor here lately, but they have a responsibility too, and, and I think that people need to understand that, and Brittany, I'm not sure what is the percentage, the county collects all the revenues, and then the school board gets a portion of those revenues before we even get it to use. And I think it's a pretty high number, I thought 59 percent or something is what I had before. Is that correct? Somewhere around 59 percent? So 59 percent is taken off the top and given to the school board. Um, I do feel like the school board's going to have a little bit of a millage increase. I don't know what that number is right now. Hopefully, they can hold it the same too. That would be great. But I put pressure on the school board. They were not liking me last week at all. But I think we all have to work together. We've talked about having a little bit more meetings together prior to having these budget meetings so we can all work in sync and, and, and work better together. But please understand that, call them too, because they're getting 59 percent of your money before we get it. You know, I'm totally, I'm about to be at the age where I'm going to be a senior and be looking for my discount, right around the corner. So I do agree that if seniors didn't have to pay as much, it would be great. I'm not sure how we get there. That's something for another day, and we've got to work on that because it is very difficult. My husband's retired, I still work, but it is, everybody's house is pinched, and I get it. When everybody calls me and says, I'm a senior, I can't afford anything, I get it. I just don't know how we get there, and I'm just going to be honest about it. But somehow, we have to get there, and we have to do better because we are losing people to Walton County for that reason. So I am in the real estate business, and I get a call every day, I'm moving to Walton County because I'm not paying school taxes anymore. And I say, well, I can't blame you. I hate it because I love Newton County, I want you to stay here. But that is a big amount of money sometimes for people. Make sure you're getting all the exemptions that you're supposed to get. Check your property card, check your, check your bills, check everything. Make sure you're getting all the exemptions that are supposed to be given to you. That might help you with something. The ex, the other thing I have is the Splot. I'm really concerned about the Splot projects. We went through a period when we, when we had voted on this Splot where we did a lot of projects, a lot of things to add to the county. That's great, they're wonderful, but you're absolutely right. We have to fund those, and those funds don't go away. That project does not close down like Mr. Henderson said. Those are going to be ongoing things. We have a lot more of those coming on. I am very concerned about those things, very concerned. We, those are already there. And if you look on the, online, you'll see the Splot projects and how those lay out and when they're coming online. We have to fund those, we have to do the maintenance on them, we have to pay the utilities on them, we have to keep them up. So I'm all about taking things and making it smaller and less government and less spreading all over the county where we can keep maintenance together. So that's my point on that. Cuts, I mean, you know, cut, cut, cut. We're still looking at this budget. Um, I think we were two hours up there today, Stan, trying to cut this budget, and, and we're still looking. So know, just know that, that the passion is here from this board to do that and to, to go line for line. I mean, we're going line for line. Brittany's turning her screen around, and we're looking at it. So, so we're doing everything we can to do that. I think a lot of these, this overages is coming from the salaries. We have talked about staggering people on, we've talked about the, the comp class, how that's going to work, it's going to be staggered on some people. We've talked about benefits, we talked about positions, all kinds of things of how to stagger those on, so we may have to have a bi, a mid-year budget review. So we're trying everything we can, we're putting off projects or software or different things that we don't think is ne, needed at this moment. It might be needed next year, but we're trying to look at everything that's a necessity, and that's exactly what you're doing at home with your budget. So that's how I feel about it. I'm, I'm very, very conservative. Every day I tell them, I can't live with that number, can't live with that number, get it down, get it down. So, but I am, but I do have to be realistic and say that some of the things we have to have and we're not going to be able to cut, but hopefully, we'll get a little bit more off for you. But we've come a long way from, from the 9.3 down to today's number at 8.6. So we are working on it, and I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. It's very important to get involved in your community and know what's going on. You can't wait and start complaining on Facebook after the fact. You got to be involved and know what's going on, and we appreciate y'all doing it. I know you hired us to do that, that's why we're here. We're supposed to be looking out for your interest. My daughter tells me that all the time. She's like, Mom, we don't come to meetings because we put you in that seat to come. So, but thank you so much for everybody being here tonight, and reach out to us.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate that. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Long, second? Commissioner Edwards? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried. Thank you all again.